I am just, just horrified.
The way I tell people is I survived Nixon.
Yeah, no, it's not. He's been here.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's crazy, right?
All right, good evening. Can you please rise and I'm gonna ask outgoing Chief Austin to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, November 12th. It's 7:30 PM or a few minutes after. We were in executive session earlier, but we just came from our little reception out in the hallway here. And I know everyone in this room is here for our audit report, a resolution on the audit report. So we'll get straight to that.
Hour and a half, is that it?
If we're lucky.
No, I mean, we just, we just had a very nice reception regarding our police chief, and we want to get to the, to the first order of business, which is, you know, we have our outgoing police chief Greg Austin and, and our incoming police chief Eric Dangler. So we'll get straight to that, so.
Read the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. Considering the appointment of a police chief, now therefore be it resolved that Eric Dangler of Valhalla, New York is hereby conditionally appointed to the position of police chief with the Village of Ry Brook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York and according to the terms of the offer letter dated November 12th, 2024. And be it further resolved that the annual salary is $203,000 with an effective start date of November 13th, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
I know there's a lot of us that are gonna wanna say some words, and I will try and keep it as brief as possible, you know, in deference to everyone in this room. You know, I've, I've been on this village board for a little over 11 years now, and 11 and a half years. And I've, I grew up in Ry Brook and I've been here since 2009. And I feel really lucky to live in such a great community. And I know I speak on behalf of the village board and all of the residents of the Village of Ry Brook when I say that we've been blessed with an amazing police force. We're very lucky to have who we have, serving the residents of the Village of Ry Brook. And a lot of that starts at the top. And Greg has been employed by the village for longer than I think you'd like me to say right now. Having started in recreation and moved into the police department before it was even the Village of Ry Brook, potentially, has, has worked, worked his way up to police chief. And we've been very lucky to have the leadership that we've had among our department. And we are now turning the reins over to a very equally professional and superb individual. Not just an officer, not just, you know, a sergeant, but a, but a, but a great individual in Eric Dangler. So I'll leave this, I'll keep this short, you know, like I said, but I'll open it up to any comment from the board before we vote on this resolution?
If I could say something. First of all, thank you, Greg, and congratulations, Eric. But I'd also, since we have so many police officers here, thank all of you for just keeping us safe and making this a fabulous village.
I really can't add anything to that except I've been here since 1995 and I love this community. I think that you have been here as long as I have been here. And so I, I do know you. And Greg, thank you so much for serving so eloquently. And I sent you a note today, so we're lucky to have you. And I'm wishing you all the best in your retirements. Enjoy your family. And thank you to all the officers here. You have big shoes to fit. I know you'll, I know you will fill them. Thank you all. It's, it's really a privilege to live here and thank you for serving all of us so well.
I must say, Greg, we grew up together, right? I think I've known you since I was maybe two. And Greg, what a wonderful person you've become. You've really served this community 110%. And congratulations and good luck. And Eric, congratulations and good luck.
So I also grew up here. I'm a little older than Jason and a little younger than Greg, but I remember you also in the rec. department, working there tirelessly. And we are so lucky to have you and this whole police force. And Eric, thank you so much for being here also. I have a little funny story. I was telling my daughter about you and how you were stepping up to be chief. And she was like, I remember him. He gave us the tour of the jail cell in our brownie troop. And they had the coolest toilet. And I'm like, yeah, that's him. Yep. So you are gonna do an amazing job, and I'm so happy that you are here. Thank you.
Good thing they didn't know the cost of the toilet.
It is expensive.
They thought it was very cool.
It's in our stainless steel.
And I'm sure it is.
Yes.
You know, if I could just say too, you know, as administrator, Greg, it's been a great team. You know, I enjoyed working with you for, for all these years. Eighteen years, last eighteen as chief, you know, I think we've, we've gone through an awful lot together, whether it be emergencies or just planning for the future. But your dedication to the community, your professionalism was always so appreciated. You know, we have to mention our whole, being in an accredited, an accredited police department was, you know, something that was very important to you and the village. And that's just one of so many things that you've done throughout the years. So I really appreciate all the great teamwork. And Eric, you know, I know you're gonna be great too. I'm really looking forward to working with you. You've always been so personable and professional, and you always had the best ideas of the community in mind. So thank you, and thank you for stepping into this position and helping the Village of Ry Brook. And again, I'm really looking forward to working with you.
All right, so I think we have a motion, we have a second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
I'm thinking for a second.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, yes. So it is official, well, not official yet.
A ceremonial piece, for sure. You have to do the oath, administer the oath.
Oath time.
All right, so now that we have an approved resolution officially making you police chief, now we need to do the, the oath of office. So can you please raise your right hand, I guess, and say, I, state your name?
I, Eric Dangler.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York?
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police chief?
The duties of police chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Yay!
I think Eric's gonna say a few words too, so just make sure it goes to the podium.
Yeah.
All right. Couple of brief words. Just want to say thank you to everyone. Thanks for everyone that came tonight. So this is an incredible honor. Thank you all. I'm humbled and excited to accept the role of Chief of Police of Ry Brook. As your chief, I pledge to lead with integrity, compassion, and a relentless commitment to justice. My vision for our department is one that is deeply rooted in community-oriented policing. I will work tirelessly to build trust, foster open communication, and create a safe environment for all of our residents. The officers, as we know, are the backbone of this department. They put their lives on the line every day to protect and serve, and I am committed to supporting them with the training, resources, and encouragement that they need to succeed. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I am honored to serve as your chief.
Oh, yeah, that's a good picture.
Yeah.
Jason, do we wanna let him take it with that?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, why don't you take it back here?
Let them up here.
And if you want any pictures with family?
Yep.
Whatever, if you want pictures.
Yes.
All right, so we are going to continue our agenda. I am going to skip right to Resolution number 13, considering, Greg, chief?
Greg.
Chief, hold on.
Don't leave.
Don't leave.
Unless you wanna go wasted all the way at the end.
Skipping to Resolution number 13, considering the appointment of an Assistant Village Administrator.
Now therefore be it resolved that Gregory Austin of Brewster, New York is hereby appointed to the exempt class position of Assistant Village Administrator with the Village of Ry Brook, subject to the civil service procedures of the state of New York in accordance with the terms of the offer and benefits letters, both dated November 1st, 2024. Be it further resolved that the annual salary is $203,795 with an effective start date of November 13th, starting tomorrow, 2024. And be it further resolved that in this position, you will represent the, he will represent the administration office and can be assigned in several different capacities throughout the organization. And be it further resolved that as stated in Section 4-3 of the Village Code, during the absence or disability of the village administrator, the Assistant Village Administrator shall assume responsibilities and act for in behalf of the village administrator.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
I'm moved.
Second. All right, easy come, easy go.
The longest you've been unemployed in how long? The shortest, shortest of the longest.
Chris?
Yeah.
What exactly are the credentials of this candidate?
Well, after a rigorous interview process with a lot of competition, we thought he'd be a perfect fit for it.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, there's no vacation in between jobs.
You'd have, you'd have to ask Greg that.
I'm sorry.
Vacation in 2025.
Exactly. I, I was joking around. I'm so sorry.
Greg, we really appreciate you coming, you know, to stay on, help with the transition, help, you know, help us with village matters as they may be. And again, you know, just thank you for your years of service to the Village of Ry Brook. It is
Thank you for your support.
Really appreciated.
Does the village, the Assistant Village Administrator have to sit through the audit report?
Yeah.
He doesn't start till tomorrow.
That's right, that's right. The start date is tomorrow.
Yes, so you're free to go.
That's right. So Scott, stretch it.
Stretch it.
Yeah.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Now you can go.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, Chris, do you want him to sign the book?
Yeah, he's got the book right there. It should be open right to the page, Greg. Top right.
Yeah, top right.
Back again.
One time I've signed this book. Thank you, everyone.
You too. Bye. Get rest. Your big day tomorrow.
Pick out your clothes.
Pick out your clothes for the first day of work, right? All right, so now we're gonna move to our presentation, the fiscal year 2324 audit report.
Should we fix the screen?
Oh, right, we can move the TVs back now.
That's good that we protected them. Right, perfect.
I really know how to clear a room out.
Scott, is this gonna be different than the one I heard last week?
Uh, yes, just with different numbers. Wow. You know, in my mind, I always think if it's a packed lot, they're really here for me. But I realize the truth. Okay. What a night. Okay, so I'm here tonight. I'm Scott Oling. For those who don't know me, I'm a partner with the firm of PKF O'Connor Davies. I'm joined tonight here on the computer by Carolyn Kopp, who was the manager who ran the day-to-day audit and worked closely with Chris and Trish to get the audit done that occurred towards the end of the summer. And then we, you know, just moved it through at that point and everything went well. So I'm gonna give you some word salad stuff that auditors are required to do, and then we'll, you know, touch on the numbers on how the village did financially for the year that ended May 31st, 24. So our responsibilities when we conduct the audit is to make sure that the audit is done in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And what we try to do is achieve, can't achieve absolute assurance, but reasonable assurance that the numbers that we're looking at fairly present what happened in the village for the year. We are required to put in writing if we find any deficiencies in your internal controls that would potentially result in, you know, numbers not being accurate. And thankfully, we're happy to report that we did not find any of those kinds of deficiencies. We would advise management of appropriate accounting policies and their application. There's always, every year, there seems to be new governmental accounting standards or pronouncements that the village has to follow. And we just, you know, help advise and make sure those are being adhered to. And then our biggest responsibility would be to communicate if we came across any fraud or illegal acts, and we're happy to report that we did not.
Oh, yay.
What you folks in management are responsible for are making sure that you select and use the accounting policies that are appropriate to make sure that the financial statements that we are auditing are prepared in accordance with what's known as U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. That you are required to establish and maintain effective internal controls over the financial reporting process, because if the controls are no good, then the numbers that are gonna be generated are also gonna be no good. You have a multitude of financial laws, regulations, contracts, agreements that you have to, you know, be in compliance with. And particularly beginning this year, some federal laws and regulations. And I'll get into that towards the end of my discussion. You have to provide us any financial records, you know, that, that we need in order to satisfy ourselves with regards to the numbers. And then at the end, you provide us with what's known as a representations letter. It's a whole host of like 50 bullet point things that you've given us everything that we asked for as part of the audit. As members of the board, who we call those charged with governance on the next slide, your, your responsibility as the board is really, you know, being a way to communicate, you know, directly with us if you need to to make sure, because it's your fiduciary responsibility to oversee the financial process. And then, of course, just like in the commercial sector, setting the proper tone at the top, making sure things are done honestly, ethically, and so forth. So what we have done here tonight, included in the full audit report that you have, we've issued what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on your financials. That's the highest form of assurance an auditor can provide. Any client, it basically says, we believe these financials fairly present what happened here during the year. We, we do a cursory review of your internal controls. There are separate audits that could happen, you know, if you wanted a deep dive on internal controls. So it's what's needed, you know, under auditing standards to, to make us comfortable with your processes and procedures. Financial statements include a lot of judgments and estimates. Not every number is a, you know, a hard, hard and fast number. So we have to review any estimates that are in here, make sure that they're reasonable. You also prepare what's known as an MDNA, a management discussion and analysis that appears right after the auditor's opinion in, in the full audit report. That kind of explains the whys of what happened. Why, why did this happen? Why did this go up? Why did this go down? And so forth. Happy to report no difficulties working with your folks here and getting the audit done, no disagreements. And, you know, we have to be independent in order to issue an audit opinion that says we're independent auditors. So we have done that. So now, let's take a look at the numbers. And again, there's more detail of these in the full audit report that you have. So the village's total revenues on the first line were estimated originally at about $24.2 million. During the year, Chris came to the board, asked to amend the budget to increase the estimate of revenues to $24.9 million. That was primarily to recognize the use of some of the ARPA stimulus funds that the village had gotten in two tranches, you know, during the COVID pandemic. And you had a certain amount of time to, to spend all those funds, and about $729,000 were spent in this past fiscal year. And then the good news is, your actual results showed that revenues came in at $26.4 million. So you did $1.5 million better than what you had planned. That primarily came from taking in more sales tax from Westchester County than had been budgeted for by about $200,000. There were some interest earnings, obviously interest earnings this past year were extremely high. And you actually took in about $700,000 more in interest earnings this past year than you had budgeted. Of course, now, the Federal Reserve has cut interest rates for the last two meetings, so we are probably not gonna achieve that, that kind of goal again. You also did very well on, you charged for certain police services when, when they're, you know, when they're doing work for private entities. And that money came in about $300,000 more than you had anticipated. And the only negative revenue that came in slightly less than budget was mortgage tax. That came in about $125,000 less than budget. So when you put all that together, that's what generated your positive results on the revenue side. From expenditure point of view, the budget was approximately $24 million. And as you can see, you spent about $23 million. So you had savings of about just under $1 million, $979,000 of underspending of the budget. Some of those savings occurred in your costs for the sewer districts. Health insurance came in less than you had budgeted. The police, the cost of operating the police department actually came in about $200,000 under budget. And you had money set aside in contingency. And you had unused contingent funds of about $68,000. So all of those led to the savings there on the expenditure side of the budget. So when you come down in the first column, you see a negative $1.6 million, and that's balanced by fund balance. So your plan was to balance your spending this year through the use of fund balance, through your savings account. Some of that money was appropriated because you, you reallocated money to your own projects each year. Some of it was appropriated from your debt service reserve from previously accumulated interest earnings on borrowed money that you used to offset your debt service payments and so forth. So that was the original $1.6 million. That got revised again through board resolutions to approximately $1.8 million. You looked to take an additional, that differential of $170,000 from your fund balance and use that to fund $110,000 for EV charging stations and $60,000 for police body cameras. So you said, we'll, we'll pull some money from our savings account to do that. The good news is, the third column, which is what actually happened. So because revenues came in stronger than you conservatively budgeted, expenditures came in less than you had budgeted, instead of dipping into fund balance by $1.8 million, which is what would have happened if everything came in exactly as you budgeted, right? Your plan was, we'll draw down fund balance. So not only did you not have to draw it down by $1.8 million, but you actually added $748,000 to your fund balance. So very positive results. That $748 gets added to your opening fund balance of $11.7 million. And so you could see you end up at, end of the year with $12.5 million in your total fund balance. So a very positive year financially. Now on page seven, we look at how that $12.5 million is allocated. So the $12.5 million's at the bottom of the first column. So your fund balance is broken up into different pots. So there's a very small first grouping there, what we call non-spendable. You have to pay certain bills in May that are really for June and beyond, about $50,000. So we set aside fund balance because the cash already went out the door before May 31st. The next group is what's known as restricted fund balance. So restricted fund balance is restricted under general municipal law, but none of these restrictions can happen without board action. So you have set aside for future debt service obligations, you have $1.1 million set aside to help offset debt payments that you have on your bonded indebtedness. And you use $300,000 of that debt service reserve in helping to balance the budget you're in now for '24, '25, similar to what you did for this year. And then you have $227,000 set aside for the playing field. Obviously, as that wears down over time, this would be a, a pot of funds that you would go to. So some additional money was, was added to, to this reserve from last year, a total of about $40,000. Some of it was interest earnings and so forth. So again, about $1.6 million of the fund balance restricted for those purposes. Then, as a board, you have committed a total this year of $2.9 million, basically to, to future capital projects. You used $1.2 million in the budget that you're in now to, to do certain projects. And then you have $1.7 million that would be available going forward, beyond the '24, '25 year. And this, you know, the board's had a policy where you keep replenishing from surplus each year. You keep putting money in and then reuse it and, and, and keep it rolling forward. So $2.9 million, basically about a quarter of your fund balance, is, is essentially committed for future capital projects. Then there's a small amount that we call assigned fund balance, which is really just purchase orders and conferences that were incomplete at the end of the fiscal year, about $45,000 in total there. So what that leaves out of the $12.5 million in fund balance is $7.7 million in what's unassigned or free and clear fund balance to be used in the future by the village. So as a percentage of the budget, it's a very strong percentage of your approximately $25 million budget. And it's there in case something goes very wrong and, and you, you need to, to access some additional funds that you didn't anticipate. So that's, that's really a very strong position. It would be very strong if you had to go to the bond market and they're looking at your finances. It would help with the interest rates that, that you're getting on, on any of your borrowings. So very strong position there in fund balance. So then, speaking of borrowings and debt, the next slide talks about the debt that the village has. You kind of have two different kinds of debt, what we would call short-term debt and, and long-term debt. So the top chart is your short-term debt. These are what are known as bond anticipation notes. These are generally one-year obligations that you're able to renew each year or convert to a bond if the, you know, if, if the, the rates and the market, you know, work for that. So currently, you have a vans outstanding for these three purposes. You see the original year that these were issued. The maturity on these was in September '24, and you did roll a portion of this over and reissued. You had $1.1 million outstanding in May. And in September, when, when these matured, you paid down about $580,000 of it and rolled another $600,000 to the next year. So you see what's outstanding on those. And then, from a longer-term perspective, you have long-term bonds. And then from a longer-term perspective, you have long-term bonds. Your big one was issued in, in, well, two of them were issued in 2018. The first one was really for capital-related purposes, where you had borrowed 14 million dollars in principal, and it had a 30-year life. And the current balance on that bond remaining is about 12.3 million. And then you had to issue some tax surcharge or a bond for a, a large tax cert up the road here for 1.5 million dollars. And that one, you have 675,000 in principal left to pay. That one matures in a couple of years. So about 13 million in overall long-term debt. And then just bringing this to conclusion, we, we showed this slide. This really essentially has nothing to do with your general fund operations that we talked about. But if you look at certain other parts of the statement, the financial statement, the full statement, you're actually going to see some negative numbers and looking like you're in terrible shape. But that's the way the governmental accounting standard board wants everybody to look. So they, a couple of years ago, made all governments in the United States record what's known as other post-employment benefit liabilities, essentially health insurance for retirees. So by having employees now and committing to pay health insurance for them in retirement or a portion of their health insurance in retirement, you had to engage an actuary to determine what the present value of that future obligation is. And the actuary came back this year and said, you have a $53 million outstanding liability in present value dollars of what you would be paying down the road for the health insurance when, when your current employees retire, plus your currently retired employees and what you would be paying for them during their life expectancy. So it's a rather large number for everybody because New York State does not allow you to fund any of this in advance. You basically fund what we know as a pay-as-you-go amount. Each month you get your health insurance premium, you pay it for everybody.
Wow.
And that's it. But this is the long-term obligation. Other states, even Connecticut, allow local governments to set up essentially like an irrevocable trust where they could put money in today that could be invested and grow and help pay those benefits in the future. New York has not created that. There was talk years ago of doing that, similar to like the state pension system, but it never went anywhere. So this is the way all New York governments would be reporting these things, and they're very large liabilities. So lastly, I just wanted to talk about that in the communications letter that we provide to the clients on if we find audit deficiencies and so forth, there were three levels as, as auditors, these are all judgment decisions, on whether we deem something a low-level control deficiency in your, in your operating system, you know, financial operating system, a medium level of significant deficiency, or if something you're doing is so bad that it's really, would be a problematic situation, that you'd have material weaknesses. So we are certainly happy to report that we reported nothing for material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, or really a control deficiency, because we did it as like an other matter. The only thing that we did bring up, and I touched on it briefly earlier, is normally this village does not get generally any significant federal aid, always very minimal. And when a municipal entity gets to a level where they, where they spend 750,000 or more in a fiscal year of federal money, then what has to be done is what's known as a single audit or a uniform grant guidance compliance audit. So this year, the village tipped over the 750,000 primarily from the ARPA money that was utilized of about 730,000, plus some other, you know, miscellaneous items. So once you have a, a federal compliance audit, we have to look at that program. The feds put out guidelines as to how they want that money spent and what you're supposed to do. And we, as, as auditors, go through and do a compliance audit to make sure you were following the way the federal government expects you to spend those, those dollars. So that is in your report this year. It's in the back of the audit report, which the village, as long as I know, has never had a federal compliance audit because you haven't reached the threshold. And we found the compliance audit to be fine. We didn't report anything, you know, of any problem to the federal government. We had to upload your financial statement and something in the federal clearinghouse portal to alert them that here was your federal dollars for the village of Rybrook, and which programs we audited, and did we have any findings? And, and we did not. So that's very good. We expect that this village is going to be subject to this compliance audit, at least for a couple more years, as you have that $28 million.
The NRCS.
I don't know the terminology. So this year, of the federal dollars, it was a very minimal amount, maybe 50, 60,000 had been spent. But obviously, over the next several years, you're going to be spending in excess of $25 million. So you will require compliance audits, at least I'm sure, for the next year or two, you know, at a minimum until that money is, is exhausted and spent. So that's important. So one of the things we did highlight in the communications letter is one of the requirements for federal money is you then have to have processes in place to ensure that the vendors that you're spending federal money on have not been debarred, blah, blah, blah. Like there's a whole terminology of stuff. So that's one thing that you just have to look at now, and, and I believe.
It's already been adopted.
It's already been done, so.
The board adopted it already, so, yeah.
Yeah. So that's really the only thing. We did not report that deficiency to the federal government, you know, as part of the filing. We just said it's, it's something that, that needs to be looked at. So, and it has been. So that's the end of that. So with that, I'm, I'm done. That was a lot of stuff in a few minutes. So any questions, I'd be glad to, to take.
Well, you just answered what was going to be my first question, which was, you know, I would, I would have thought that we were over 750, but I guess that's it for this, that was it for that year.
The ARPA tipped it then, and now the NRCS will do it for the next couple of years.
The NRCS, oh, right.
Correct.
Because we're looking back in time now. So I want to say thank you for, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, I think a lot of us have sat through this and, and before, and, and, and I think, you know, one of the things that always amazes me is the professionalism of the staff here, that just, you know, starting with Chris and Trish and Lawrence, just, you know, what, what they do, you know, when, when you're sitting up here and you are, you know, voting on a budget transfer, and, and, you know, it's, it's some numbers on the paper. But having sat here for a long time, we know that this is the reason why we're doing it, making sure that everything is accounted for and done the right way, and that everything is really buttoned up tight, because it's not our money, you know? We're not accountants, you know?
Good luck.
And it's, and it's, and it's, and it's not our money, you know? This is, this is the taxpayers of Rybrook, this is their money. We want to make sure that it's being used appropriately and that everything is above board, that, that everything is being done the way that it should, and, and it is. I mean, in my almost 12 years on this board, I've seen nothing but extremely clean audits. And even when we're transitioning into new phases of federal monies, like we haven't seen before, which we're very thankful for. And, and I just want to say thank you again for everything that, that you're doing on a daily basis to make it so. I think that, you know, it's, it's long been a policy, even before I was on this board, for prior mayors, of having a strong fund balance. I think that's, you know, we're, we're a small community, only 10,000 residents, you know, relatively small budget. So having that fund balance, as you said, helps us with our bond rating and the ability to procure bonds at a lesser rate, protect, again, protecting the residents of the village of Rybrook. Having that really allows us to go out and do projects that maybe otherwise we'd have to reconsider. And so I think this is indicative of, of a longstanding policy of, of the Board of Trustees, but also of the fiscal responsibility of the staff here, namely Chris, and certainly Trish. And we really appreciate everything that everyone does to help us stay in that position.
I was just going to say, anybody that's ever sat through a village budget process knows how meticulous Trish and Lawrence and Chris are. And just, nothing happens by accident.
Right. I have one statement, and that is for the members of our village that may be questioning what we're talking about with all of this extra federal money that's coming in. It has to do with the homes.
Hmm. So it's, so, yeah.
So I think we may, may want to define that because.
Right. So when the ARPA money was, as was stated earlier, was COVID money, COVID funds that were going to municipalities, through the state or not? Some, some of it, I think, came through the state.
Well, ARPA came from federal, right?
Came from federal, but, right.
And.
And then the NRCS is the grant program by which the village is buying homes that were subject to flooding, severe flooding over time, and using those funds to restore the, those lands to floodplain eventually. So, and again, at no cost to the taxpayers of Rybrook, except for the value that comes off the rolls.
And time.
And time.
And time.
And time, right.
And energy, a lot of energy.
And time and energy, yes. Yes. But even the consultant fees for all of that are covered by the grant itself.
Yes.
Right.
And I could just kind of echo what the mayor said. First, I want to thank Trish, the pre, our treasurer, Lauren Simmons, our, our deputy treasurer. They do just a great job. They work so hard, working with our auditors, making sure they have the information they need to evaluate us and really to make sure that we're, we follow our procedures and the staff has followed their procedures. And they really do just a great job, day in and day out. So thank you guys very much. You and your whole team in the treasurer's office are absolutely amazing. But, and that doesn't happen without, that also doesn't happen without the board setting the policies that we are able to enforce and keep in place. There's a lot of communities that use fund balance for operating expenses or to keep the tax rates artificially down, and that catches up with you. A lot of communities that don't reinvest in infrastructure. So I'm very proud to be in a community where the board has set strong financial policies that we can enforce. And then when it comes to budget times, we're able to look to make sure we're not raising, over, overcharging residents in taxes, trying to stay within, I think this year's, our expenditures within 4% of budget. And, and the revenues, I think, were a little higher at six, but there's reasons for that because of the, the economy. But, you know, I think that what the board could take so much pride in is the financial policies that are put in place from the budgeting to our audit. You know, we talked about ARPA. What was your ARPA? What were you using? A lot of places use that ARPA money for other things. We used it for capital, we used it for sewer improvements, we did it to pay for the metro radio system with the police department. These are things that we're able to do without having to add debt or do anything like that. Our fund balance, when we talk about a strong fund balance, whether it be surplus or whether it be existing fund balance, that's going to be used for capital. So, you know, in a time when there's tax caps and other situations out there in municipalities, you know, this village has been able to make sure that we're continuing to reinvest and also try to run a very tight budget so that, and then if we do come up with a surplus, that surplus gets allocated to capital, and it all, I think, works extremely well for the community. And that's because of the policies that the board set in place. And then, again, people like our, our treasurer's office that's able to enforce those policies and keep, keep us in check.
And I would also say it hasn't been the easiest couple of years. You know, in, in the last five, six years, we've seen the closing of two hotels in the village of Rybrook. You know, that, that took a significant bite out of our budget. But we've also had the county increase sales tax by that 1%, which really helped us on the revenue side a lot and helped make up that difference. So it's certainly been a bit of a roller coaster. Hopefully, we get those commercial developments back in Rybrook so that we can start to see expanding budgets again.
Sounds good.
And, you know, and, and again, help protecting the taxpayers in the village of Rybrook.
One other thing, although he is very modest, I must tell you that, as I think, Jason, you pointed out with the police that it's from the top down. We too are from the top down, and this, Chris, nothing would work without you.
Yes. That is clear, and I was going to say that. So thank you for bringing that up. It is a top-down village, and we're very lucky to have you and all the people that work with you on the budgets. And I know that we work very hard on it as well, but it's also because you set.
It's a great team. That's all. I'll leave it at that. It's a great team all around.
You set the stage appropriately, and that is why there's no surprises in our audit and for any of our residents also. So thank you for all you do.
Trish and Lawrence, every year you guys do this, get all these numbers, put them all together, smoke coming out of ears, I'm sure. One, lots of smoke. And then you get all this, this book full of numbers, you give it to this auditor, he gets there and tries to rip it apart and find something, and he never does. I'm wondering if he's doing. I think they're doing a phenomenal job, or you're not doing your job.
I can tell you, we are full of questions. And especially now with all the, the federal stuff going on, you know, we, we've kind of been in touch, you know, not just in audit time, but throughout the year.
Which is very important. To make sure that everything's on sync, and then at the last minute, you're all like, oh my gosh, we got to get this done, that's great. A lot of planning. That's, that's very important.
Right. We have a great team.
Going in that direction is critical.
And thank you for being part of the team.
Preventive maintenance, we call it. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. Just, I'm glad we have you guys on our team. You guys are amazing. You know, you guys are so good with numbers, I can't even imagine. So not my thing. You're very good quantitative thinkers. So keep it up. Thank you.
All right.
And Scott, Carolyn, where are you speaking next week?
Uh, I don't know. I've got to look at my calendar. He's had me twice in a week, so.
School and year. School and year. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, let's move right into the resolution. Resolution number one, considering approving the fiscal year 2324 audit report.
Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the fiscal year 2324 audit report provided by PKF O'Connor Davies.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
So moved. Sorry.
All right. Any further comments or questions?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Thank you again for the audit.
Thank you.
And Trish and Lawrence, thank you again for everything you do on a daily basis.
You deserve a clap. Sounds of applause, too.
All right, moving along. Resolution number three, considering an exemption extension, request of an exemption extension of chapter 158, section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook School District.
Whereas on April 11th, 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enabling a gas, a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st through September 30th, effective May 1st, 2024. And whereas under the Village Code, properties that are five acres or more can apply for a full or partial exemption from this local law. And whereas the application has been distributed to known eligible properties and also placed on the website. And whereas on December 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a request for an exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook School District. And whereas the one-year exemption was granted by the Board expired on October 1st, 2024. And whereas on October 21st, 2024, representatives of the Blind Brook School District submitted an application for a further exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as the considerations raised in the application from representatives of the Blind Brook School District, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Blind Brook School District.
Thank you, Chris. And we'll hold off on motions and seconds until we have what we're doing. I believe we have representatives of the school, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Luis Rodriguez. I am the Director of Facilities for the Blind Brook School District.
Could you just lower the microphone a little bit?
I am the Director of Facilities for the Blind Brook School District. I am here to request an extension on the leaf blower ban for 2025. We are currently switching over to battery-powered equipment. We have purchased several pieces of equipment, handheld leaf blowers, lawn mowers. We are working with vendors like Argento and Sons and local landscapers to determine We are working with vendors like Argento and Sons and local landscapers to determine what equipment would work best. The biggest problem we are having is with backpack blowers and the life of the battery. On full power, we may get 25, 30 minutes tops, and we have to be switching batteries and just kind of, we can't get the job done quickly and efficiently. We are also considering purchasing hitch blowers, which are not motor-driven. So, that's where we're at.
What kind of blowers?
Hitch blowers.
Hitch. What is that?
It's driven by the tractor instead of its own power.
That's just like a PTO.
Oh, like the big fan?
PTO, okay.
Does it have like a big fan or something?
Right.
Oh, I saw one of those the other day. It looks really cool. And how efficient is that?
Very efficient.
I mean, it's really just the energy of that the tractor is producing itself.
And the noise is not as loud.
Okay.
Which is a lot.
That's interesting.
That's primarily for the fields?
Fields, sidewalks, parking lots.
All right, well, I mean, we have this exemption in place for the larger properties. You know, a lot of municipalities automatically exempt schools. You know, I, for one, certainly understand the expense that comes with operating a municipal operation such as a school district. I'm very pleased to see movement in a positive direction of purchasing of electric. I would imagine certainly when schools in operation, you try and use that as much as possible when the students are there. You know, I'd be inclined to grant one year.
Yep.
It is refreshing to hear that positive steps are being taken.
I actually passed the school last week and commented that they were doing it by hand, some of it.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion and a second, please, for approval of a one-year?
You'd be approving, you'd be approving it through September 30th, 2025.
Right, because again, then it's not in effect October 1st through, so during the leaf season through spring, it's not in effect.
That will, yeah, that will get you to the following.
That'll get you to the spring of 26.
Yep, spring of 26, May of 26, May 1st. That gives you time, the idea is it gives you time from October 1st to May to come back to the village if you needed to for any other exemptions.
Second.
So we have a, we have a motion by trustee Isner and.
What's his name?
What's his name?
The man to my left.
All right.
All right, trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering a request of an extension exemption of chapter 158, section 2.1 of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Washington Park Plaza.
In the interest of time, I'm just going to go down to where it's different. So, let's see, as of August 15th, 2023, the board approved a request for an exemption enacting a seasonal, seasonal leaf blower ban for Washington Park Plaza. And whereas the, that expired on October 1st, 2024. And whereas on October 16th, the representatives of Washington Park Plaza submitted an application for further exemption of the requirements of the local law requiring a ban on seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers at Washington Park Plaza. Now therefore be resolved, that is, consideration of the intent of the local law as well as considerations raised in the application for Washington Park, the Board of Trustees hereby approves, denies, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption in accordance with the village code.
Thank you, Chris, and.
Doug Minishi from Washington Park Plaza. I'll make it very short. Since we spoke last, when possible, we've been using the electric or battery-operated. When things are very, very dirty, then of course we use the gas. So we are limiting the gas blowers as much as we can to comply with the new laws. Like the gentleman before me stated, the batteries, they still have to perfect because I've tried them all just about, and you can't get more than a half an hour out of 99.9% of the batteries. That's the only issue I have. If they make a battery that lasts for a few hours, I would be 100% battery-operated, and you don't have to smell the gas or anything like that. But as it stands now, we use gas minimal. I won't say minimal when needed, because every day is a different day. I mean, the garbage, nobody knows what the garbage is going to be every day until you get there. So when possible, we use the electric if it's not bad. When we need the gas, then we use the gas. So that's why we'd like to have the exemption.
Right, and if I remember correctly from the last time, it's, it's being used to clean up the parking lot in the mornings before customers arrive, correct?
Exactly, and the sidewalks.
And the sidewalks.
And if I recall, the demonstration at the plaza was garbage that was the major concern. Apparently, people treat the plaza as a giant garbage can.
That's exactly right. It's unbelievable, and you would never think it would happen, but it does.
Yeah.
It does. It's just, it's just unbelievable, and people will actually dump it as they're walking out of their car, going into the stores. And we're there, and there's no regard whatsoever.
Yeah, the term leaf blower is almost a misnomer.
Garbage blower?
It should be paper blower, right, instead of leaf? But that's who we're at with that. But like I say, we, when possible, we do use the battery-operated. So we're trying, but as soon as they come out with something that lasts longer than 20 minutes to a half an hour, I'm all for it.
I actually had the pleasure of using a, an electric-powered backpack blower recently.
How was it?
It was, I mean, to me, and I've, I've used the gas-powered ones before, and it felt exactly the same. And it had the power, and then I said, and the person who was operating, I said, now, how much time do you get out of it? And he said, the rate you're going, half an hour. If I turn it down, I get 45 minutes.
But when the place is very dirty?
Yeah.
You have to put it on boost.
You have to put it on.
Because otherwise, you're going to blow a piece of paper.
Is it just this, is it just this parking lot that you're maintaining, or you've been going on to other jobs?
No, no, we do other lots throughout White Plains and Mount Pleasant and stuff like that, and some of them are a little bit better than others, but the volume that they get at Washington Park is incredible. So more volume is more garbage, and it's just unbelievable, like I say.
Would it help for them to have more garbage cans?
We have cans at every third post. If it's really bad, there's even a container, a compactor, that's right there. If, you know, not that they, you know, the regular people that come in, the customers aren't allowed to use it, but I would rather see them throw it in that than throw it on the ground.
Right.
And that's even visible.
It's terrible.
But it's just, they just have no regard. They just open the door, dump it out.
Yeah.
I mean, thank God, people stopped smoking because years back.
Butts.
They used to get their ashtrays. Get out of the window, all over the ground.
It's gross.
So gross.
You can't even imagine unless you see it.
Right.
You know, because you think this area, you know, people would be a little more respectful for the shopping center, and even for themselves.
Right.
You're throwing garbage in where you live.
Yeah.
To me, that's really crazy.
I agree.
You know, I mean, that's, you know, but this is what we have to put up with, I guess.
No, I think.
It's unfortunate and.
Horrible.
This is also, you know, this has always been one that's confounded me a little bit, the Washington Park Plaza, you know, because not all of that lot is in Rybrook.
No, it's split.
No, it's from the supermarket forward.
Acme is the split, yeah.
Right, so it's, it's interesting, what it would be difficult to enforce. Well, you can use gas on this side, but not on this.
Especially when you call something in, they ask you, where is it exactly in the shopping center? You have to give them a specific line, even though the line's not there, but it, you know, Acme back and Acme forward. That should change, that would make it. But I guess it's not going to do it because it goes right in the middle.
Yeah.
I said the same thing last year when you came. I think there should be some sort of correspondence or something listed in Rybrook residents, et cetera, that people should be mindful of where they dump their trash and not.
And it's not only there, too, it's also at Rybridge.
Well, it's the same.
Yeah, same idea, same thing.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
So.
And they're around the clock, too, trying to keep it as clean as they can, you know? But it's very hard.
I don't understand.
Hundreds and hundreds of people every day come in to shop, and that's it.
Any other questions or comments?
That I have to throw in, too, because I've seen that many, many times. They'll open up their window as they're eating, and they just throw it out the window.
No.
Oh, yeah, right on the ground, oh, yeah.
It's terrible.
Quick question. So I'm thinking about you blowing all the garbage and all the thing, do they have vacuums?
Gash, steel-stained vacuum?
Not like that. They have the sidewalk vacuums, like you see down the city, White Plains has one where the guy goes up and down Maranic Avenue.
Yeah.
It covers about 24 to 30 inches, but it's basically for cigarette butts and light stuff.
Okay.
If you hit cans and big pieces of paper or cardboard from, you know, like a takeout, it won't, it won't suck it up. It won't suck it up. But it's a problem, you know, garbage is a problem, and you have to clean it somehow. You can't do it with a broom and shovel because you're going to be there for two days. So you're basically making a circle.
So what do you do? So you blow it, and then you collect it after you blow it in a certain area?
Once we blow it in piles, you know, every so many feet, we blow in piles if it's really bad, and then we actually have to physically pick it up, and then we throw it in a compactor. That's where it goes.
Are there cameras in that parking lot?
Um, believe it or not, just the restaurant.
Just the restaurant?
Yeah, just the restaurant. And the liquor store. He has cameras. But that, that's it, no overall, and Acme also.
I think there needs to be a.
The main one's Acme, the liquor store, of course, because you're talking about a lot of money there and in the restaurant. No general camera.
Like in the parking lot, nothing. Interesting.
Well, certainly, as an environmentally-minded person, this is a nightmare conversation because it's individual-use containers being thrown away, necessitating the use of polluting backpack blowers.
Don't think that.
Something that kind of hurts my brain.
Or Jason.
All right, I mean, I guess, you know, I would suggest the one-year again. You know, and we appreciate the use of electric whenever possible.
No, like I say, we're trying, you know?
And hopefully, technology keeps up and.
If they come up with a battery that lasts a few hours, everybody'd be happy.
Mm-hmm.
We will be, because you don't have to go crazy every five minutes changing it, you know? Eventually, I think they will.
I think we'll get there, absolutely.
They just have to keep working at it, you know?
All right, so I guess a resolution for a one-year, approving a one-year.
Approving it through September 30th, 2025.
Okay, thank you so much.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, resolution number five, considering a stipend for two senior office assistant office managers.
Whereas on November 13th, senior office assistant office managers Rose De Scoli and Jessica Carpenteri have each agreed to assist the Treasury Department for at least two half-days per week due to a temporary staff shortage expected to continue no later than February 28th, 2025. And whereas Rybrook wishes to compensate them while performing these additional responsibilities, now therefore be resolved that effective September 13th, 2024, senior office assistants office managers Rose De Scoli and Jessica Carpenteri shall each be provided with a stipend of $250 per paycheck for additional responsibilities assisting the Treasury Department until such time as those services are no longer needed due to staffing shortages. Be it further resolved that these stipends shall end no later than February 28th, 2025, unless additional authorization is provided by the village board.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I think the resolution itself explains the situation. But if you want to give a little background.
Sure, no, one of our full-time and one of our part-time employees are both going to be out for a period of time, and, and we just want to make sure we have the necessary coverage. And two of our employees, one has helped in that department before, that's Rose, and Jessica have agreed to help the department. And thanks to Michael Nowak and Robert Alachi for giving them up for part of the week, too, for this period of time. We're able to kind of pull it all together and work as a team and make sure everything gets done.
Is that 250 per week or per paycheck?
Per paycheck.
Oh, okay.
It says per week.
Uh, resolved, yeah, I'll resolve, it's the per paycheck.
Yeah, that's right.
Where does it say per week in the other one?
I think, no, I think it said it in the backup material.
Oh, okay.
Agenda does.
Yeah, it said per week in the backup material.
In the backup material, okay.
The resolution reads correctly.
Okay.
Well, we certainly appreciate Rose and Jessica stepping up and helping out where it's needed for the, for the time period that is needed, so.
It's per paycheck.
Questions or comments?
Two, it's basically.
When does it begin?
Tomorrow. One of the, one person's out, and the other person goes out tomorrow, tomorrow's their last day.
A lot of stuff happening tomorrow. Busy day, busy day.
Some of it's really good.
In Philly Hall tomorrow.
And it doesn't, it's not bad news, it's good news.
Right.
Musical chairs.
It's good news, though, you know, the reason that the person's out.
Yes, it's very good news.
Happy news.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Isner?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering authorizing emergency spot sanitary sewer line repairs.
Whereas the sanitary sewer line in front of 19 Hawthorne Avenue has been compromised, and whereas the superintendent of Public Works sent multiple requests for proposals to vendors to receive quotes, and whereas Palladino Concrete Creations Corp. was the lowest of the four quotes received at a cost of $39,500, and whereas under the village of Rybrook Financial Comprehensive, Comprehensive Financial Policy, a minimum of three written quotes are required for purchases between $5,000 and $34,999. And whereas pursuant to general municipal law, an emergency purchase outside of the authorized procurement policy amounts can be approved by the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees to prevent threats to life, health, safety, and welfare of the residents. And whereas if not repaired on a timely basis, the compromised storm drain line poses an imminent threat to health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Rybrook. And whereas pursuant to the village, a general municipal law, the village of Rybrook seeks to approve the emergency work on Hawthorne Avenue with Palladino Concrete Creations Corp., who provides, provided the lowest quote in the amount of $39,500. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to general municipal law, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the emergency spot repair sewer line repairs on Hawthorne Avenue to be completed by Palladino Concrete Creations Corp. at a cost of $39,500.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved, second.
I know there was a lot of discussion about this and some questions about this.
Michael, you want to come up and give a little summary of what, what happened out there and what we're doing?
This is a sewer or storm water? This is sanitary?
Sanitary.
Okay, because there's some different wording, I think, with storm.
Well, it's, it's a sanitary storm. It's a sanitary sewer line.
Well, it's a combination?
The reason it's before the board this way, Michael could describe, Michael's going to describe the work, but the reason it's before the board is it's technically above the limits. When we got the quotes, it's above the bidding threshold. So we don't have the time to wait for a formal bidding process and approval process for a sanitary sewer line that's failing.
And what happened to it? How did it fail?
Here's the pipe. Here's the pipe now.
How did that happen? Visual. I love the visual.
Perfect.
It just collapsed?
Well, I wish they'd seen that on trustee.
Kind of, um, so it's clay pipe?
It's basically clay pipe, twelve-inch. It collapsed. It's about fourteen feet deep. So it's age. At this point, it's age. It's an old pipe. Um, it was slated for relining. Uh, we're waiting on grant money at the moment. So, um, we lost that battle, um, unfortunately. But yes, um, as Mr. Bradbury had mentioned, um, the purchasing thresholds exceeded what we were allowed. Um, however, you don't know what the numbers are going to be until you go out and get the proposal. So they just slightly exceeded. So, um, rather than wait another two weeks to formally bid it, here we are.
Yeah, that's not something you can wait that amount of time to formally.
Do more damage than good.
Excavation started yesterday. Pipes in the ground as of today. Restoration should be tomorrow. By the end of the week should be done.
So they have no sewer service right now or?
It was, it was flowing through slowly.
The pipe is fourteen feet deep and the houses are much higher. You have a lot of capacity in the pipe. So we lucked out. So we had a lot of, uh, um, extra room in the pipe to store material.
Thank you for just being so descriptive. I very much appreciate it because I could not envision this.
Do you have any video of that, Michael?
Do you want?
Michael, was it all on, on public right away, all this work?
Yeah, it's all in the roadway.
Yeah.
All right. How many feet?
About twenty feet.
Just across the street, I guess.
Well, it's, well, it's basically a section of the pipe.
From one end to the other side of the street?
No, it's actually parallel in the road.
It's in the road.
Yeah, no, it's actually going down the middle of the roadway.
The road was closed today?
Partially.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty deep.
Well, I think our Hawthorne, uh, Hawthorne Street neighbors are very happy that we're on it for them.
Is the rest of that street clay pipe?
None of them were aware.
What?
None of them were aware.
Really?
We had no phone calls. The only way we found this was by doing our three D manhole inspections, which is part of our, um, requirement for save the sound. And that's how we stumbled across these manholes being elevated in levels.
Interesting.
How's the rest of the, uh, street?
Flowing.
Flowing, but, but they need repair too eventually?
Yeah, but we're going to reline it.
When we get the grant, we're going to reline it.
Do we have the whole street?
When do we expect that to come through?
Working on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just got, um, comments back from the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, myself, Mr. Bradbury and Mr. Rivera are going to have a meeting on Thursday. We're going to go through those comments. So soon.
The big issue is we have really good pricing through an old, old, from the existing grant, the existing, uh, bid that we have for the work. And, but because it's a federal, uh, the grant is in place, we need to make sure that the federal requirements meet the spec that we did, what, two years ago or a year and a half ago at this point?
Three years.
Three years ago. So multiple, because we did a multi-year bid. So there, they need to get comfortable that our original bid meets the federal requirements, which are pretty significant. So at worst, we'd have to bid it out again, which we, we didn't prefer that because we know we got good pricing that, you know, will probably escalate at this point.
Do you think that they see this as a good cause to, to escalate or expedite?
We're in conversation with them. Um, there are a number of items that we have to meet and we have to satisfy. And there's no guarantee that even if we satisfy those items, um, that we would be approved. And that's the roll of the dice. Contract expires in August. So, so we are getting close and to rebid it, I mean.
Just delays it.
Put up the cost.
We can turn around the bid right now if we had to. Um, the contractor's on board. He's willing to comply with the federal requirements. It's a matter of the federal reviewers.
Saying it's okay.
That and saying it, because we cannot legally go back and change a bid. We cannot revise our bid document now to accept those federal guidelines. So, but there are provisions to do it retroactively. But once again, it's not guaranteed. So we're getting close and I'm one for taking chances, but we're getting close here to timeline. It seems like it's far away.
Well, we don't want it to happen is that, you know, the years from now where they do an audit and they said, oh, you didn't have this one piece of paper that had to be in the bid and now you got to return the money. So we're not going to take that chance if that's.
Got it.
So unless we can get them to sign off on the way it was bid and that them agreeing now to comply satisfies it, then ultimately we're going to have to rebid it. So that's the two choices. Either get, hopefully they'll agree that this satisfies it or if not, we'll probably have to rebid.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Isner?
Yes.
Trusty Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number seven, considering a revised agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Rostand Solutions LLC for a BCA for the Avon Circle and Portchester Middle School Flood Mitigation Project.
That's a big yawn.
I know. I'm sorry.
Whereas Avon Circle and Portchester Middle School Field Area has been prone to flooding in previous storms and instances of large amounts of storm water. And whereas Rybrook has been awarded a grant of, uh, in the amount of two hundred thousand from the risk program or New York State Home and Community Renewal Program to complete a benefit cost analysis, which is a BCA for this flood mitigation project to assist the village in complying with the grants for the balance of funding needed for this flood mitigation project. And whereas Rybrook previously received three proposals to complete the BCA with a different, with different approaches to complete the task on October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and the village board accepted Rostand Solutions at a fee not to exceed twenty-four thousand, six fifty, as it provided the best methodology and scope of work to complete it at a reasonable cost. And whereas the Village of Rybrook had to reissue the request for proposals to include additional requirements from the New York State Home and Community Renewal Program, and the same three respondents either submitted revised proposals or were confirmed, or confirmed no change in their previous proposal, they therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby reapproves an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Rostand Solutions of three fifty Lincoln Road, Miami Beach, Florida, for a BCA analysis at a, at a revised fee not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, which includes Rostand Solutions complying with additional requirements of the risk program. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second.
This is a really important step in the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Chris, do you want to?
Yeah. So this actually piggybacks perfectly with the discussion on the last item.
Right.
We had Rostand Solutions. We're ready to go. And the risk program, our New York State Community Homes Renewal Program, they required other conditions that had to be satisfied. So we had to go back out. So this is exactly what we talked about before. They're just a little bit more flexible where we were able to reissue the request for proposals and, um, ask them if they wanted to revise those numbers and comply with the new requirements or resubmit. Um, and the lowest bidder was Rostand again, wasn't the lowest bidder, it was the lowest at the reasonable, at the cost point and the approach is the one that will work for the future grant applications. And we recommend them, but they did have to increase their fees to meet the new conditions of the New York State Grant Program.
Right. And, and just, you can, I'm, you know, we're obviously familiar, but in the public, they may not be. This is a very important step in the process of this project to get this BCA so that we can prove that the, that it will be effective and do what it's supposed to do, helping downstream flooding and, and preventing damage or loss.
Yes.
Farther downstream.
A hundred percent. This would really help the Avon properties and it will really help get a, a usable field on the Portchester Middle School property. So we're basically moving the storage area from above ground at Avon where it's flooding everyone to below, uh, below the middle school field. We already have three and a half million from the county. We're trying to get a grant for the balance of the funds. And in order to get that, we need this BCA analysis. The good news is even though it's a little bit more expensive by a few thousand dollars, a hundred percent of the costs are paid for by the grant. So they added requirements, but they pay for them. So there you go.
They pay for them.
Wait. So just to understand the, the engineering of this, so they're going to, I saw it's a large pipe, uh, existing, there's an existing culvert now. So they're adding another larger section of pipe.
A section to go behind Avon, yeah.
Avon's going to go underneath the Westchester Avenue.
Yep.
Um, and then it's going to go into the field, I guess, the soccer field there.
The middle school grass field, yeah.
The grass field.
They're going to put a giant storage coltech system underneath that field. Monster, from what it looks like.
Yep. Giant coltech system.
Raising the field up.
Be elevated.
Probably seventy-eight feet.
Yep. Uh, I don't know the, how many feet, but it'll be elevated.
And that's going to store the water and gradually.
Dissipate it out.
Dissipate it out controlled, I should say.
Yes.
And that hopefully will, we.
It'll solve, it'll significantly help Avon to a great extent. And it'll also give a usable grass field where the.
Yeah, right. The wind situation for the school.
Downstream.
Uh.
And that won't.
Won't, won't really help much beyond that.
And that won't be activated unless there's a major storm, right? I'm assuming. That system wouldn't be activated. That system would be kind of like.
That's for a bigger storm.
Bigger storm.
Yeah.
Right now it's going to continue flowing normally, but when things get ugly.
But when it hits a certain capacity, then it hits the overflow.
Interesting.
Yeah.
It's hard to talk about these things in a time of drought.
To say the least.
But we have, but as everyone here is aware, we've had some major storms in Rybrook and had some significant flooding events at Avon and at the Portchester Middle School. And this would hopefully be.
The engineers designed it.
And again, this is to help us go after the grants. Because a lot of times when we've gone after the grants, it's been said that without the BCA, they, you know.
They've turned us down in the past without having a full, a detailed BCA.
Oh, good. All right.
So this is our best shot at getting that. And you have to meet a one-to-one criteria where the cost and the benefits are basically a one-to-one.
And this pretty much is. All the damage that was done, right? That's the hopeless.
No, I mean, that's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to prove. That's what we're trying to prove.
Right. Exactly.
Trying to prove. And again, this is grant funded as well.
Yes. So, and it won't take long to do this, maybe a month, month and a half to do this part. And the idea is we want to make the next round of brick funding, which is a grant, to go after that rest of the funds, which would keep it on track for two thousand twenty-five.
Okay. All right. So.
Thank you.
Keep your fingers crossed. Very good.
Other questions or comments?
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Isner?
Yes.
Trusty Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number eight, considering the approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget for the Portchester Rybrook, sorry, Portchester Ry, Rybrook Ambulance Corps, Inc.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has an agreement with the Portchester Ry, Rybrook EMS for emergency medical services in which the Village of Rybrook contributes a share of the annual budget based on a formula of seventy-five percent split equally among the three member municipalities and the other twenty-five percent based on population.
You just do what you say.
And whereas the Portchester Ry, Rybrook EMS Committee approved the, uh, budget that includes many services, uh, many service and retention recommendations from the EMS study consultants resulting in necessary additional expenses for the essential emergency service. And whereas Ry, Rybrook's annual payment share for two thousand twenty-five would be four hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars and seventy-seven cents to be paid in quarterly installments of one hundred twenty-three thousand, eight twenty-six and sixty-nine cents. And therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Portchester Ry, Rybrook EMS budget of four million, nine seventy-four, one twenty-five and sixteen cents resulting in a Rybrook Municipal contribution of four ninety-five, three oh six for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second?
So moved.
Second.
As we had said earlier, we are very blessed to have a great police department in the Village of Rybrook. We are also very blessed to have this intermunicipal consortium of EMS service. And, you know, Chris, you know, we certainly all know and anyone listening should know how much of a champion you've been for EMS service in the state of New York, uh, and certainly in this area. And, you know, thank you for being involved in this. And, you know, we thank you to all of the EMTs and everyone else who works for the Portchester Ry, Rybrook Ambulance Corps, Inc. For all that they do for the residents of the three communities and beyond. It's, it's a often thankless job. Um, often you do get thanked, but in difficult conditions. Um, and we are very lucky to have this service available to the residents of the Village of Rybrook. I mean, you look at response times in other places throughout the state and throughout the country, and you, you see just how great it is, how great we have it here in Rybrook.
No. Thanks to the village board and also the boards in Portchester and Ry City for everyone agreeing to that five-year implementation of a recruitment retention plan. It has been extra funds, but it's still, I think, one of the best values in our budget. And this is a service that provides over six thousand calls a year, uh, to the three communities. That's, I'm going to say again, over six thousand. That's an incredible number, uh, to the three communities. And they do it with great professionalism and priority one calls. And the target is below nine minutes, which they routinely always hit that, well below that. So, yeah, so thank you. And I'll, thank you for your support of the EMS.
And as we know, as the populations increase, you know, in the, in the communities, so must the EMS service. So certainly, you know, something.
And the recruitment retention efforts have really helped. And it's been working. And it's really been working, which is great.
That's great. Any other questions or comments?
Trusty Epstein?
I have one question, and that is, do we have a breakdown of the calls that are made to each, um, and in the backup or?
Yeah, it's in the drop box. We put those in Dropbox every quarter.
Okay.
Um, but I can give you, whatever you like, we can give you. We give great detail on what, how many calls to each community. That's in a different report than the backup for the budget.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, we have a breakdown of, you know, we do, we do very extensive data analysis with EMS. So we have a breakdown of where the calls are going, coming from. We have calls, um, what hospitals they're going to, you know, response times on each one. If anything goes beyond, uh, target timeframe, we now analyze why and what happened. How many calls get mutually laid, how many to others, how many come into us. You know, it's great numbers of information. So I can provide whatever you like.
Okay, that's awesome. And also, uh, calls to the airport, et cetera, because I know that that is a discussion.
Yeah, we, we're, uh, extremely close to reaching an agreement with the county on that.
Terrific.
They have a draft agreement that they're, we're hoping they will accept.
Great. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Now you have to vote.
I have to vote? Oh, yes. I did vote on Tuesday.
Trusty Fish?
Yes.
Trusty Isner?
Yes.
Trusty Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number nine, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Food Cycle Science Corporation for food cycler kits.
Whereas Rybrook was awarded a municipal food scrap recycling grant from the New York State DEC in the amount of twenty-two thousand, four twenty-five to acquire one hundred food cycler kits. And whereas under this grant stipulate, those stipulations, the Village of Rybrook and resident participants will each be required to provide a total grant match cost of three thousand, seven thirty-eight. And whereas Food Cycle Science of Ottawa, Canada, as part of a pilot program, has proposed an agreement that would allow the Village of Rybrook to acquire one hundred Eco-three and Eco-five models for a total cost of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. And whereas Rybrook is interested in entering into an agreement with Food Cycle Science to obtain one hundred Eco-three and Eco-five model kits. And therefore be resolved that Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the grand agreement, the agreement between Village of Rybrook and Food Cycle Science of, in Canada, for one hundred food cycler kits, uh, as part of a pilot program to reduce food waste in the Village of Rybrook. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved. Second.
I remember seeing, you know, when they presented to us, uh, that was a while back.
Yeah.
That was, that was not recently. It's a very interesting.
No, a couple of years, two years, yeah.
Yeah. It's a very interesting product. And, and certainly, you know, I, you know, this is different than our municipal composting program. This is something done announced. And if I remember, it's a, what do they call it? It's not a composter.
It's called a compost. It's, uh, basically it's taken all the water and the product out.
It's all the, all the water out. Yeah, it's like drying out.
A dehydrator. A dehydrator?
Yeah, and.
A few hours, you basically have material that you can mix into compost and other things.
Right, exactly. So very interesting product. It'll be interesting to see how it's used. So. And, and again, grant funded, minimal expense to the Village of Rybrook and certainly with.
And also diverts it from our.
Whatever comes out of this, you don't bring back here to scrap. You keep it at home. You're supposed to put it in your garden.
You can mix it with other material to do it. But, yeah, it also reduces the amount of food waste that you have, that you have to get rid of anywhere. So, and we don't pay for it.
They don't want you to throw it back into the garbage, right?
And when it goes in the garbage, we have to pay for the disposal cost.
Right. So they don't want you to throw this back into the garbage. They want you to keep this at home to.
Throw in your garden or recycle it.
Yeah. You have to mix it with other compost, but yeah.
Compost.
And, and again, a lot, and I'm assuming as residents, I'm assuming as residents get these, they'll get instructions.
There's an education campaign that comes with it. And, uh, yeah, and actually they'll be able to order it. They'll be able to order it and it'll be shipped right to their house. So we don't have to store it or anything.
Oh, there you go. All right. Any other questions or comments?
What happens if we have more residents than, than the hundred units?
Well, we could always go look for other grants. We don't know if there's interest. So this is kind of a pilot to see if there's interest.
Okay.
If there is, then we'll look to, then that's a good sign that we should be continuing to do these types of programs. But, you know, for a minimal cost, we thought this was kind of a nice starting point. We'll see how it goes.
And the way it's worked, so there's two different miles Eco-three and Eco-fives. There'll be fifty of each. So it's a whole one hundred.
I see that. Yeah. Thank you.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Isner?
Yes.
Trusty Marino? Yes. And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number ten, considering fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget transfer and capital fund budget modifications.
And therefore be resolved that the following general fund budget transfer and capital fund modifications to fund Village Hall Building Repairs Project as of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four be hereby approved.
And you can summarize this one.
There's a series of transfers in the resolution that, uh, anyone can follow tomorrow if they'd like a copy. And be it further resolved that the following general fund budget transfers from contingency be approved to fund. from contingency be approved to fund personnel service accounts for the police department and non-union employees on the PBA collective bargaining agreement settlement and non-union salary increases and benefits approved respectively, and allocated insurance accounts. And again, there's a series of transfers from contingency to the various departments. What this is, is funding, transferring from contingency, which is where we allocated funding for the police contract that was recently settled, as well as the non-union compensation for the current fiscal year.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
And this is why our audits come back to me every year. This is what I was saying before.
Three pages of transfers.
Right. Three pages of transfers, but very important ones, and this is, and again, budgeted previously, but.
Yes.
Put in contingency because it wasn't decided upon yet.
We're in negotiations.
Yeah, it's still, we're still in negotiations.
I've had, we've had multiple years of negotiations.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the board?
As long as Chris doesn't read the whole thing every day.
Deal.
Trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Molino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eleven, considering modifying the dates of village board meetings in December.
Ooh.
Okay, so this is up to the board which one you undo, but right now it's drafted that you cancel the meeting held on December twenty-fourth, which would just leave you the one, the first meeting in December.
I think this is very traditional, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, we've had one meeting in December, one meeting in August, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, in some.
I think are the two where we do that. Certainly gives us plenty of time to prepare for that, and I don't think anyone wants to have a board meeting on Christmas Eve.
I don't think so.
So, I mean.
So, our only board meeting will be December tenth.
Yes.
Yeah, typically, you know, in, in the past, sometimes we've found a date somewhere in between, so it's not too long between. I think that the agendas don't get, and when we've done it, the agendas don't get too long, and I think if there is an item that comes up, we can always call a special meeting of the board if the need arises for something that really can't wait. Otherwise, I think anyone who comes before us regularly knows that we do this, and there's plenty of time to prepare for it, so. So, I would, I would propose that we just cancel the twenty-fourth and keep our regularly scheduled tenth.
Yep.
Yep. Sounds good.
That's fine, as long as Chris is not gonna dress as Santa Claus.
No promises. I may or may not have done that in the past.
I won't even expect a way.
All right, so, do we have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Thought I'd forgotten that.
Trusty.
So, the November twenty-sixth is our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
And December tenth.
That's right before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So, trusty Epstein?
Yes.
Trusty Fisher?
Yes.
Trusty Heiser?
Yes.
Trusty Molino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number twelve, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on April twenty-fourth and May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
And therefore be resolved, yeah, therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meetings held on April twenty-fourth and May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed? All right, administrators' report.
Just a couple of quick items. Um, we're pleased we've had a lot of great events for recreation in the last several months, so October and early November so far, we've had, you know, the pumpkin patch, the Howl, Halloween, scavenger hunt, pumpkin smash, seed swap, seed swap, I'll say that ten times fast.
Mm-hmm.
But, huh? Trunk or treat, yeah, so we've, you know, we liked, we've had a lot of fun doing it, but I think hopefully, we believe, you know, we had great attendance at all the events this year, so, you know, it's about bringing people together, and we're, you know, we're pleased to offer it, and I think the community really is, really enjoying some of the things that are being offered by the rec department and the village. Just want to mention that the fifth closing is tomorrow for the fifth home for the NRCS program, so that's on Wyman Street, so we currently, we currently already own eight Brook Lane, twenty-two Brook, one Wyman, sixty-six Rock Ridge, four Wyman is tomorrow, and we still have three more that are ready for closing. So, you know, the program is working, we're moving through it, and, uh, so I'm pleased that that's, you know, continuing to move ahead. Doral, uh, Doral Arrowood, the nine seventy-five Anderson Hill Road property had an, had an, had an auction last week for the property, and the, the lender, who was Fortress, they won the property at the auction bid last Friday, and the amount, they announced it as thirty-seven point seven on the meeting, and that was a, a credit bid, because they held the credit on the property, so they were able to get the winning bid on it, and the only bid, I believe, on it. Uh, so now the current owner is no longer Mr. Cohen, and it is now Fortress, so, you know, the primary issues for the village is, you know, they, now Fortress is the new owner, now they need to, um, make sure the property, number one, the buildings are removed, which are, they're all removed at this point except for one maintenance building, so we're very pleased from a safety standpoint that there's not that hazard on the site. However, we want to make sure we're meeting with them, they do need to remove the piles of debris that are there, we have a meeting set up for tomorrow to meet with Fortress to get that done so that the site is cleared out, and then they're gonna have obligations to be a good neighbor and make sure that the property is continuing to be maintained. And we'll be in contact with Fortress, and hopefully, um, the next phase will be, whether it be the same or, or different, but we hope that there'll be, you know, the, the next property owner or the developer of the site will have the similar type of vision to, to really make an, a positive impact to the community, but the first step is creating a dialogue with Fortress, so that's the next step that the village is working on.
Thank you, Chris, and as mentioned earlier, you know, it's unfortunate that we lost our hotels in, in Rybrook, um, certainly, you know, the pandemic contributed to that, but, you know, um, this one had been in decline previously, and, um, you know, commercial development in the village helps the residents.
Yep.
Through the non-homestead contributions, and so, and certainly also helps the other non-homestead.
Yes.
Properties.
Spreads that burden out among the more commercial properties.
Right, so, um, we hope that there will be, there will still be commercial development in the Village of Rybrook, and I guess time will tell.
Listen, it's a great property and an amazing community, uh, you're not gonna find that property in a lot of locations throughout the county, so it offers a lot, I'm sure that's why Fortress wanted to make sure that they were, you know, there's still an asset there that they, they believe in, too. You know, they probably wouldn't be the developer, that's not their business, but, um, you know, hopefully there'll be somebody, there'll be a visionary there that will come up with a plan that the village will be excited about.
That's something.
Now you're causing trouble.
Thank you, Chris. We do have one discussion item on the agenda, uh, which is the day camp and travel camp fees. Typically, we would talk about these during our budget meetings in March, however, um, at that point, registrations are already occurring, or soon to be occurring, um, so, you know, if there was to be a discussion about this, this would be the time.
I may make a request, a personal request, since we've had a long night, is there any way this could be put off till our next meeting?
Absolutely. The only deadline that would be there is we need, if there's going to be any changes by the village, we would just need to know that by mid-December, so that's the timeframe we're working against.
That's a problem. So we can have a start of the discussion.
Then, then, then I'm gonna suggest this, why don't we just spend five minutes on it tonight?
That's fine.
Just to start the discussion, um, and get a general sense, more of a general sense of just where the board members stand on the camps themselves, um, maybe a little bit of background, quick background, Chris?
Sure.
And then we'll spend a few minutes just discussing this, and then we'll be able to review the backup materials, maybe there will be additional backup materials that can be provided, and we'll discuss it more in length at our next meeting, is that, is that okay?
That is fine.
That's fine, I just didn't want to engage in a prolonged.
Right.
Sure.
We could just set the stage a little bit, though, just for the discussion, I guess.
Please.
So, yeah, so this is a discussion that I was asked to provide some information about two different camps that we run. One, we run a day camp every year, and we also run a travel camp. The day camp is primarily at Crawford Park, and they use the pool over in Portchester at the Harbor Center, and the travel camp goes on trips several days a week, not the entire week, but several days a week, and will sometimes use the pools as well. The village, so in, in collecting the information, I'll give you a little sense, just numbers, so this year, uh, two thousand twenty-four, the summer day camp had a hundred and fifty-two campers, and last year had a hundred and thirty-one, and the travel camp this year had seventy-five, and last year had eighty-one. So, you know, it's been pretty constant that, in that regard. Uh, we also, we have a lot of different rates that the village offers in its fee structures, and I provide that in the backup. Um, there's a lot of different rates depending on which weeks or how many weeks campers wanted to attend, and also if it was paid early or not paid early. Uh, and lastly, we also provided information about comparison and doing a survey to see what other municipal camps were charging, and kind of where we sit on that, compare, how we compare to others. You know, throughout, and I will mention to the board, you know, this is an issue that gets discussed, you know, in, in every municipality, and there's a lot of it as a policy decision. In some communities, um, there's a feeling that the camp should be self, self, self-sufficient, and the expenses, the revenue should cover your expenditures. In other communities, there's a sense that, no, you, uh, you should be running a camp that has, um, that everyone can afford and that is subsidized by the taxpayers, and there's no right or wrong answer to that, that's really a policy question, and there's a lot of, lot in between there, from severely discounted to breaking even, so there's a lot of numbers in between, and what we try to do is give a breakdown of our travel costs. The one expense that has certainly gone up in recent years has been the busing, uh, that's just not here, that's everywhere. Buses, it's even hard to find coach buses, uh, we can find school buses, but the cost, the prices for buses have really gone up. Out of our, out of all of our expenses, that certainly, other than payroll, uh, the buses is our, is our next largest program, that, and then the trip cost for the travel camp, so, um, that's something that we've had to struggle with as we come to and look at our camps versus other camps. Everyone's going through the same thing, the question really for the board to decide is, you know, is there program change, is there changes to the program that you're interested in, and if there's a change in policy about how much of the, how much should be recovered in term, from, in revenue versus the expenditures for the program. Same again, I'd urge, there's not really a wrong answer there, the question is, what's the best, uh, decision for the Village of Rybrook?
Great. Thank you, Chris, and I'll, I'll put my two cents in first, and, um, again, I just, you know, we'll keep this, this short for now, but, uh, my personal feeling is that, as Chris said, this is a subsidized camp. I think we're pretty much middle of the road from what I saw among the fees of what other municipalities charge. I think you're, you're providing an affordable camp experience for the residents of Rybrook, and, and that helps multiple ways. We're employing local youth, um, and giving them, you know, salaried job, or not salary, but, you know, money, that sounds wrong when I say salaried jobs, but, you're, you're giving them an income and, and.
It's often their first job.
What?
It's often their first job.
It's often their first job, absolutely. Uh, so gaining, they're gaining work experience, at the same time, you're providing a camp experience that can be afforded by most of the residents in your village. Um, we've also had some scholarships, if I remember correctly, uh, that were separately funded, but, um, you know, you're providing that summer camp opportunity, as we all know, summer camps around here can be unbelievably expensive, even from a very young age, and so this provides a local option that's much more affordable. And so, you know, to me, this is, you know, again, it's a service that's being provided by the municipality, you know, a lot of, a lot of services, we collect leaves, we don't expect to make money on collecting leaves, we plow the roads, we don't expect to collect money on plowing the roads, this is another service that's subsidized a little bit by us, but also by the fees that we do collect, so it's not straight expense. And I'll leave it open to comment. I don't know who wants to go first.
I'm gonna refrain until next meeting.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I'll say I also love that we offer this camp and that it's very reasonable, and I feel like it seems like it's one of the more expensive ones. Um, I have to say, I'm just reading Bert's commentary, though, on his description of the camp, and, oh my God.
I'm not sure if this is.
That's from the supervisor's office, that's not from.
Yeah, this isn't public.
Yeah, that is, that's just a commentary from the supervisor.
It was really more the clown, how the kids were scared of the clown, but, anyway, um.
Yeah, so the reports we gave you guys was, one was from Rocco Ferrano, uh, who does the day camp, and the other one is from Kathy, who does the travel camp. Just a summary, they do an overview every year, just to summarize, you know, the camp enrollments, the program, their experience.
I understand, no, no, I'm just, I, I want to say that I'm the one that brought that up, because some parents spoke with me with regard to their opinions about the camp, and that's when I said, uh, I asked Chris, I said, Chris, when do we need to start discussing this? And he is the one that said that the fire is under our feet for the timing, if we wish to change it. And I want to say that, all I'm gonna say is that the cost of the buses have escalated so that, um, just for the travel camp, it's fifty thousand dollars for busing for seventy-five kids. So, this is a lot of money, and it's not that many kids, and so I think that we have to think about how to, um, handle that. And if you look at the rest of the camps, um, the town of Marinick, by the way, charges six hundred dollars per week for the travel camp, and we are nowhere near that. So, we are not, I mean, it depends on what you do for the travel, but you have to look at it, and, um, you know, are we middle of the road, do we want to subsidize everybody? If you, to look just at the travel, I want you to just analyze that, it is a lot of money. And, um, while I'm all for providing a great camp experience for people, um, sometimes you're better off just handing them a four hundred dollar check and saying, take your kids to something. I'm, I'm, that's not what I'm saying. They love the camp, I want to provide that, but I think that we also have to, there's been inflation, there's huge cost changes, the minimum wage is going up, I think it behooves us to actually be, um, the fiduciaries that we are, and reevaluate it before it's too late for this season. That's what I think. I think we do have to raise the rate, um, people wanted, um, uh, some people wanted less swimming, some people wanted more swimming, um, we also have to have a plan, it, it doesn't seem, reading the comments, I, I think it needs to be better organized, that's what I would like to, uh, think about also, but that's not our discussion. But if you analyze what other people are charging and what we are charging, and the costs incurred, it's only gonna go up this year also, so I think we have to raise it this year before it's too late. So, that was my point.
Well, keep these comments until next meeting.
Until next meeting.
I think maybe the rates should be looked at, I mean, that's probably, I think what
So that was my point.
Well, keep these comments until next meeting.
Until next meeting.
I think maybe the rates should be looked at. I mean, that's probably, I think what they offer is great, so from my experience was with the people that work there as well as people that go, so.
Right, if it's, and if it's a better experience, then we'll get more kids, which is really what we would love, because the kids do like it. I would, I also requested to read the surveys, which I don't have yet, so I, I think that will be forthcoming also.
Yep.
So great, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. You know, just as, you know, my final comment, I would just say that, you know, you know,